Two-minute warning supervisors, two court. Supervisors, please take your seats, we've got started this evening. I hear by call to order, February 20th, 2019, meeting of the Brown County Board of Supervisors. At this time, Vice Chairman Lund, you might need us in the end location, following the pledge, you'll lead us to the play. Vice Chairman Lund.
Dear God, we ask your blessings for our community, state, and nation. We ask that you be with us this evening as we work to help our county move forward. We pray for all those in law enforcement as they put their lives on the line to protect our citizens. As always, we pray for those that serve our nation in the armed forces, that they stay safe in their vital mission to protect our freedoms. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, opening roll, please note, Madam Clerk Supervisor Knizel is excused this evening. Supervisor Stevens, you can leave us off, thank you very much. Supervisor Delway? Supervisor Nicholson, over here. Please wait until I state your name, so we know if everyone gets on all right, device in order. Supervisor O'Payne, please. Supervisor Erickson, well, here it is. Supervisor. Thank you. Supervisor Evan. Supervisor Vanderlees, thank you. Supervisor Buck, Supervisor Van Dele. Supervisor Dantin, thank you. Supervisor Russell. Supervisor Ballard, Supervisor Castor. Thank you Supervisor Van Deck, Supervisor Linsen. Supervisor Delaurier, Supervisor Tran. Point a hand. Supervisor Sennett, thank you. Supervisor Shadwell. Thank you. And Vice Chairman Lund? And Supervisor Denyed, if you confirm. Thank you. Thirty-year-old this evening, Madam Clerk. Okay, a little housekeeping. I'd like to strike 12I. 12I. Need a motion? It was incorrectly communicated, so we're not going to take that up, it'll go back to Executive Committee. So I would accept the motion to approve the agenda as amended with striking 12I. My Supervisor Delway, second by Supervisor Nicholson. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is comments from the public. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments must be limited to five minutes. It's the Board's role to listen to public comments, and I ask questions to discuss nor take action regarding public comments. I do have some appearance forms here, if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, we have staff that will provide you the form. And we'll start off with Tricia Redman. If you'd like to, please step forward to the podium, state your name for the record. And good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tricia Redman, and I work in the Brown County Clerk of Courts office. I'm here from the Clerk of Clerk's office, and many of my coworkers are present. I am here tonight to discuss some concerns I have about the classing comp report that is being presented tonight. In 2015, when the first classing comp came out, I felt my classification was incorrect. I asked for a reclass, I asked for my position to be reclassed, and my boss, John Vanderlees, agreed. We went through the reclass procedure, and ended up in front of the admin committee. With over fifty people there requesting reclasses, the committee decided table them until further financial impact can be determined. The summer, this summer, John was still telling me that they were going to put my position at a higher category. On February 6th, at 4:24 PM, we received our 2019 class comp draft as an email. It stated it was being presented to the admin committee, executive county, executive and county board in February. After reviewing it, I realized my position was demoted from the last comp, from the 2015 classing comp. I also realized most of the positions in our office were demoted. We were given no explanation, no comparisons, no grievance procedure, nothing. We weren't, never even talked to them. Having gone through the reclass procedure, I realized that we needed to go to the admin committee to discuss these demotions. The problem was, the meeting was thirty-six minutes after we received the February 6th email. The next day, several asked John about being demoted. He sent an email to us on February 7th indicating he was asking HR to visit our office next week to answer questions. The email also said HR had indicated they have flexibility to review classifications. Well, after we asked her on when is HR coming over, he told us on February 14th that HR had not gotten back to him. I knew at this point something was wrong. I contacted HR myself. I kindly talked to the writer, who told me it was going in front of the county board tonight. Nothing could be changed, and they couldn't talk to us until the Board approved it. They did contact John about my concerns the same day. He received an email, we received an email on February 15th stating John never had saw, never saw how we compared to other departments in the county. He plans to formally ask for our department to be reviewed. Well, isn't it the job of John and HR to compare our department to other counties' departments before submitting a new 2019 comp class request, which demotes most of his office? I have compared our jobs in our office to other departments in downtown and other counties with HR indicated that compare our jobs to. The counties were Shawno, Okano, Calumet, and Alagame in Door. Starting with the Clerk of Courts, he will have gotten a fourteen thousand raise by the end of his term. The Chief Deputy will be promoted for her top K in 2015 from sixty-five thousand to seventy-nine thousand in the 2019 K draft. Our Financial Operations Manager left because of the pay. He went to the city of Green Bay. He is the Financial Manager for the Municipal Court. He received a raise at the city of Green Bay, and they also have pay steps there. The new Financial Operations Manager here in Brown County, his top rate has now been lowered by thirteen hundred dollars in the 2019 new draft. His job compares to Alagame County Financial Operations Manager, who now makes ten thousand dollars more than ours. The Alagame Financial Manager was first, the Alagame Financial Manager is our first Financial Manager in the Clerk of Courts, who had left and then Neil took over. Our Court Prenters were demoted from the top pay of twenty-five thousand thirty cents to twenty-three twenty. They compare to legal assistants in the DA. The DA legal assistants were not demoted. I found the compare pay for a deputy in Calumet County, their pay range is twenty-three four to twenty-six oh two. Deputy Juvenal Clerk was demoted to twenty-five thirty from twenty-one twenty-two. Door County Juvenal Clerk makes twenty-five forty-three. I'm an account technician. I was the one that had asked for a reclass. I was demoted from twenty-one eighty-eight to twenty-one twenty-two. The category I was in, the account technician from the child support agency and account clerk two, their top pay has now increased to twenty-two twenty.
One minute more.
My coworker came from the child support agency in our office. We have a lot more responsibilities and duties in the child position. We handle a lot more money in our office. Our cash daily deposits range from several thousand up to ten thousand a day. The account clerk in Calumet County pay range is eighteen twenty-four to twenty-three fifty-eight. My reclass has resulted in a demotion for me after waiting for three years. That's all I have to say now, and there's another girl from our office that wants to continue on. Thank you for listening.
Yep, we'll call them, thank you. Uh, next speaker, Ally Wineke.
Good evening, County Board. I would like to continue on with some office employees.
Give your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ally Wineke, I'm at 3581 Satellite Lane in Green Bay. I would like to continue, as Tricia had talked about, several employees and the demotions with this reclassing comp perspective. Another position, Deputy One, would be demoted from twenty-five thirty to twenty-one twenty-two as a top pay. Another position, a customer service representative, would be lowered from twenty dollars and thirty-five cents to nineteen ninety-six. In comparison of other counties, the front counter, or known as customer service, take in legal papers and payments at our office. Most, most other departments in Brown County have higher rating ranges for their front counter employees. The girls in my office deal with legal papers and also massive amounts of handling money. In 2018, over fifty thousand receipts came through the front counter that they oversaw. Clerk One and Clerk Two positions, they would be demoted from twenty dollars and thirty-five cents to seventeen seventy at a top pay. There is a current job opening in Alagame County where jobs that would have the exact same job duties have a pay of sixteen forty-one to nineteen seventy-two. Other positions within the Circuit Court, a part of the Brown County courthouse, would also have other people redlined, such as judicial assistants. Other jobs, such as court reporters, clerks, and managers in the courthouse, would also be part of that reclass. Currently, in the Clerk of Courts, there are eight people that would be redlined from this proposal. If we get to the two to three percent raise in 2020, an additional eleven people in our office would be redlined. This would mean a total of nineteen out of twenty-nine employees would be redlined in total from this proposal. If you check other county departments, such as the District Attorney, only two people which have a very similar job position and job duties have only been redlined. The County Clerk's office will be receiving a promotion. The registered P's would only have one person redlined from this proposal. In finance, only one person would be redlined, and child support had absolutely no redlines from this proposal. We did not have any communication about how or why we were being demoted with this project. As employees, we were never contacted by HR about what even our job duties are. It seems like only employees in the courthouse were either lowered or demoted compared to other county offices in the downtown area. We do not have any policy in place, or were ever told, as to how to grieve these demotions, other than coming and talking to today. The policy that you guys would like to implement, essentially and basically, is robbing Peter to pay Paul in other positions in this county. If you think about it, the most veterans and loyal employees that have been here for ten or more years, who teach and guide new positions, especially in our office, are the ones that are being demoted and essentially lowered pay for their being here for so long. This is not right, and this is not fair, and I ask that you not let this happen. Therefore, I respectfully ask that you table this classing comp draft that is being presented tonight until these issues can be further looked into and resolved for our office. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, Wendy Jo Lusardi.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Jo Lusardi. I am currently the Juvenile Deputy Clerk of Clerk of Court since 2014, and I have been employed with the county for twenty-plus years. I am here to speak about the great concern that we have with the 2019 wage comparison, and I'm requesting that this be tabled for immediate review, to be sincerely believable that this is fair, true, and just. The Juvenile Deputy Clerk, the last wage comparison, the amount per hour was twenty-five thirty. I got demoted with this comparison to twenty-one twenty-two. That is a substantial difference of four dollars and eight cents per hour. I have compiled my own data from four out of the six counties that were chosen for this comparison. I'll give you the Brown County cases that my department has processed for the year of 2017. We processed six hundred seventeen cases. In 2018, we had processed five hundred ninety-one cases. Door County, 2017, they processed a hundred and twenty-one cases. 2018, they processed ninety-seven cases. Their amount per hour currently is twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is more than what my maximum now would be brought down to. Okano County, rate of pay, twenty-five eighty-two per hour. In 2017, they processed two hundred ninety-nine cases. 2018, two hundred and eighty-five. Alagame, their rate of pay is twenty-two eighty-nine. Again, more than what I am making. And finally, Calumet. They process about a hundred and twenty-five cases each year. Their rate of pay is, their current pay scale is at twenty-six oh two. I can tell you, as of February 18th, 2018, there were twenty-two juvenile delinquent petitions alone filed. As of 2018, 2019, there have already been forty-eight delinquency petitions filed. An updated job description was completed by myself and John Vanderlees on February 5th, 2018. This job description was updated to include five additional items listed under the Knowledge, Skills, and Abilities section, and four additional items listed under the Essential Duties. However, this section did not include the continuous training that I have been instructed to do, now currently on my fifth individual in the past four years, in hopes of being able to pull a number of individuals to assist in the Juvenile Department when needed. Given the number of people stated above that I have trained, it is a clear indication that this process that Mr. Vanderlees has put in place is not effective. An example, the latest example, has been that we have been denied for both myself and my coworker in my department to attend this year's Wisconsin Juvenile Conference. In its entirety, which is three days, only one of us can go for the entire three days. In addition, it must be understood that in the Juvenile Department, the statutes clearly outline the specific time limits for these cases, which in turn dictates the timeframe in which our work needs to be completed for liability and legality issues. Also, the juvenile cases are the most complex cases of all case types. I would like to repress a copy of the documentation that the Human Resource Analysts have completed in this wage comparison, which should include a job description, as well as the information of the duties, the number of cases in each caseload, specifically looking for the counties in this comparison that also draft all the court orders for each individual case. Brown County drafts a multitude of orders. Other counties, the DA's office, Court Council, Human Services draft these orders.
One minute.
Oh, gosh. Um, also, I'd like to see how many of these counties have to train their own department heads. How many of these counties have their department heads help out, and not be badgered to work harder and faster, and not to be badgered on saying that a certain amount of time you should have this job completed. How many of these counties have had their department heads come step in and assist in other aspects of the Juvenile Department? Can I say Brown County is one of them, in the Clerk of Court office? Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Bonnie Lee. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Lee, 3759 Park Road, Greenleaf, in Leighton, Morrison. Um, several months ago, when I spoke to you all, my comments revolved around the then escalating issue around rumble strips. Since that time, and through many meetings, my questions now have expanded beyond that. There's questions that I have regarding the decision-making process, and how data has been used in the decision of reaching, the decision to put rumble strips in or not put them in. To start with, if I backtrack, this effort began after two accidents at the intersection of Z and G. Up until that point in time, there appeared to be reasonable efforts being made in terms of how to handle intersections within the Brown County area, but also within the Morrison Township. Once those accidents happened, it appeared as though there was a ramped-up speed in how to deal with intersections, and a decision was made to put in multiple rumble strips throughout the county, and particularly in the areas of Morrison. What I have learned through the process of coming to a variety of meetings, speaking with people, emailing people, talking to people on the phone, is that there has been some, what I would call misinformation in the reports, and decision-making process that has clouded some of the issues with the rumble strips. For example, in the presented safety plan to the Planning Committee, we found that at the intersection of G and Z, at the road to fatality occurred, that when statistics, excuse me, are put together to make decisions about changing intersections, that what is left out of those numbers are accidents that occur from intoxicated drivers, medical events, or deer. The accidents at G and V, both were medical event and also an intoxicated driver. Those numbers should have been left out of the decision-making process and the safety plan that was delivered, so that the intersection could be more appropriately evaluated. We're also found that there are many alternative measures that have been recommended that are not being considered. This is a question specifically that I've had for a number of months. I have yet to have explained to me why the alternative measures that have been recommended to our county, as well as have come from the Town Board of Morrison, are not being seriously considered. Those alternative measures include large stop signs that include LED lights, reduced speed limit, four-way stop, and reflectors on stop signs. The question I'm raising is, I would like to have, as a Board, a review of how the decision is being made to skip those more effective, more cost-effective measures in favor of a measure of rumble strips. Rumble strips are, according to the DOT, are not to be used within five hundred feet of a residential property. In the Morrison area, many of our homes are sitting right on the intersections where rumble strips would be used. A lot of our homes are within sixty and seventy feet within those rumble strips, which creates an annoying issue. One of the pieces of information that was left out of the report is that there are other options, other than the transverse rumble strips that are available to use. Side rumble strips, centerline rumble strips, ones that are less interruptive and invasive within the home environment.
Uh, one minute.
My concern primarily was pressed with the way in which we're moving forward in trying to protect the surrounding residents of these intersections. It appears to me that we're jumping to a significantly severe, costly measure without exploring the other options that are available to us, and that we know, based on DOT statistics, are significantly more effective.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jason Jerry.
Good evening, Jason Jerry, 1047 R. Taylor Street, Howard. On January 18th, just a little over a month ago, Chief Andrew Smith of the Green Bay Police wrote, as published in the Press Gazette, "It is critical that all allegations of sexual abuse by priests are investigated thoroughly and professionally." Chief Smith continued, "For far too long, we have seen religious organizations and colleges try to handle things internally when there are serious crimes alleged. That is not the answer. The answer is to let the law enforcement do the investigation, to let the District Attorney determine if there are grounds for prosecution." Problem, as you know, is that the Diocese of Green Bay exceeds Chief Smith's jurisdiction. As much as Chief Smith wishes, the District Attorney could look into this, that's something only the county board can ask for. Therefore, I would like to borrow Chief Smith's words, change a few of them up, make them county-wide, and present this proposal for public safety. I propose that all religious organizations operating within Brown County engage in a formal partnership with the Brown County Sheriff's Department and District Attorney, and commit to having trained law enforcement professionally conduct formal investigations into all allegations of sexual abuse, which includes turning over all records. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next speaker, John Zakowski.
Good evening, Judge.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. John Zakowski, 1254 Emily Street. I almost forgot how much fun these meetings are. I'm just here tonight, in a broad sense, to support the clerks that I work with as a judge. And it's just really out of fairness. In fact, I didn't even know about this issue until I was in my bowling league last week, and one of the husbands mentioned it. And so, I wasn't really asked to come here, I wanted to come here. And just ask the Board to be fair. It sounds like staying this study is the thing to do. The clerks do good work. They're hardworking. The ones I work with are excellent. And a lot of them are the face of the county, because they deal with the public, and that's very important for this body. And of course, sometimes that can result in some long days as well. When I was the, when I was a DA, they used to do some comp studies, and I don't know all the nuances, and I know the budget. You know, budgets are difficult, and HR has a tough job, and they're working hard at what they do. But, when I was the DA, there'd be a floor. And then they'd do a comp study to see if there were some new duties that were being involved in certain jobs or certain positions. And if you were taking on more work and doing a good job, you could be bumped up, and you might get an increase in salary, if you qualify. What I'm understanding, or what I'm hearing here, is this is creating a ceiling, and it's actually depressing the wages of people that are just doing their jobs normally. And it sounds like, if I'm reading- And it sounds like if I'm reading it right or hearing it right, they're not even going to be able to get just a regular cost of living increase every few years or so. And as someone who didn't have a raise for six years, I mean, for a family, that can be kind of disheartening. And I think that's important. I think I want you to consider morale. You know, it's hard to put a price tag on morale and anyone that has a business, you know, how important it is to keep the morale of your employees up. They're looking at how other people in other businesses and positions are, what they're making. And it's important for county government as well. I heard that perhaps they would use bonuses. And I don't know if that's a very good idea either. I had that option to use bonuses in the DA's office years ago and the state provided us that flexibility. And we tried to do a fair job, I think we did, but I think that just opens up a Pandora's box of subjective decisions. And then if there's a personality conflict between the supervisor and the employees, you're just going to create a lot more headaches. I don't think that's a smart way to go. And just asking to be fair in this overview of what to do with the comp study, the clerks are just doing their jobs. They're not like some sports athletes like Machado that just got a $300 million contract or some federal employees. We've heard these horror stories about how they abused the public trust and wasted taxpayers' money. They're just simply doing their job. And I'd ask that you treat them fairly in connection and comparison with all the other county employees and that when you're looking at other counties, you compare apples with apples. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Rachel Pop.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Pop, 2871 Crosshaven Avenue. I've worked for the county for 21 years. I'm a court coordinator for Gantak. I love what I do, but it's very hard to swallow that maybe a year and a half, two years, I will be maxed out at my potential income. We have two children. College doesn't get any cheaper and I just want to ask, please reconsider your county class study. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Laura Coles. Okay, pronounced that correctly?
Hi, I'm Laura Coles.
Coles, sorry.
That's a very, this is all the time. 2520 Lance Street in Howard. I'm here in support of the class and comp plan. I have worked for the county for 17 years in two different departments. I've been in my current department for six years. And I've been listening to the comments today and I feel for the department that is here with concerns. However, I want to thank the people who have worked so hard on this plan and I wanted to share that my department head has kept us apprised of everything throughout this whole process. I think it's a very well thought out plan. I think it gives staff and our office the hope for the future and hope that we can move within this plan. It gives us the ability to bring people in in a comparable wage to other positions within the county and other positions within the community. I have a supervisory role in my department and I can tell you that I have experienced firsthand turnover and it's hard. It's hard and a lot of the people that have left our department have gone to other departments within the county. And those people have gone, some of them have told me that they've gone to other departments because they are looking for an increase in wages and we haven't been able to do that for them because we haven't had a way to move them within wage range. So, while I understand that there have been concerns and there may be, you know, some issues with the plan, I hope that we can get into some sort of plan and that this isn't just a semester table so that we can have hope for the future and hope for the staff and the hardworking employees of Brown County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dwayne, I'm sorry, Dwayne Odenhoven?
That's correct.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Dwayne Odenhoven, 1460 County Lane Road in Pear. I wanted to address the county board along with Mr. Streckenbach about the Public Works Department. We've got a lot of waste of spending going on in Brown County in that department. Brown County was selected by the Federal Safety Highway Administration along with 500 counties in Wisconsin to do a local road safety program. And from what I understand, the other five counties decided to go ahead and use UW TOPS lab along with the expertise of the FWH, the Federal Highway Department. Our department decided to hire a consulting firm, which is SRF, which was at the cost of around $43,000. And that should be fine if we didn't have the man cord to do it for whatever reason. What happened, what's the problem with it is that the study, in my mind, and lack of better words, has been tainted. When he's going through some of the data, it's a five-year study and he just adds in an accident on that intersection because it's pertinent. I don't think you can do that, studies, and feel good about it. And then the other thing that's going on is along with that, we've looked into some of the emails that we've gotten through the open records law and between Paul and his office and SRF's consulting, there's been a constant contact with him editing out bits and pieces of this study to, and not having them include other design aspects. Part of what I'm talking about is in that study, there were some pictures included in originally that were of an LED lit stop signs. And it was also shown in the part of the study in the low-cost, high-impact roadway safety strategies portion, we had them removed. Apparently didn't like the LED stop signs. And also, when SRF, the consultant, asked about doing design work in noise-sensitive areas or near homes for rumble strips, they answered back, "That's fine, don't add that into the study." Now, to me, it's very important to have, there's noise issues, we should be looking into that and they wanted to add it and he didn't want to have that. So, I guess, I believe we've produced a $43,000 piece of garbage. At the, at some of the meetings, Paul handed out specifically to all those people in the audience, a code of ethics for engineers. I'm pretty sure that editing a study from a consulting firm don't fit into the column that's okay to do. Would I like to address about the extra millions of dollars the county taxpayers had to hand to up for the Fox River paper making corridor project? Besides the original $5 million that was originally budgeted, the Public Works Department put an estimate together for this project and the amount came up $6.6 million short, mostly because he didn't realize there was so many utilities on his road. That seems like a bad excuse for an engineer to come up with. The county taxpayers had to cover $3.6 million of this miscalculation. It should have been all done, it should have been all on the paper.
One minute, sir.
My question here is where's the accountability? There's been a lot of bad judgment in the Public Works Department lately and I want to know how the board and Mr. Streckenbach, how are you going to fix this?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no other slips. Is there anyone in the gallery who would like to speak? Please step forward. Anyone else, please step forward. Last time. Seeing no one stepping forward, we will move on to the remainder of the agenda. And with that, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes of January 16th made by Supervisor Nicholson, second of a supervisor of the favor. All those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Announcements by supervisors? Please engage your voting device. Hurst up. Supervisor denies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to extend my thank you for those that sent condolences and prayers for passing to my father this past month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Clear your light, sir. We'll go next to Supervisor Erickson under announcements.
Thank you. I'm going to scrape from the farm a little bit here. It's not exactly an announcement, but sorry, so we'll just deal with it as we go along, but I'll be very brief on it. As I'm driving around the area, and it's not confined to any specific area in the city or villages or towns or anything, but we've had a tremendous amount of snowfall. And I've talked to some people and I'm sure as I go along with this Supervisor DeLaurie will agree with me and back me up on this, but I noticed a lot of front steps from homes are not shovelled or cared for with all the snow. They have a mailbox out at the street or it's on the side of their house or something so they don't have any need to go in and out. But if you really think about this, if you ever have an emergency and either you or your loved one has to rely on emergency services, the most direct route out of your home with a stretcher is going to be your front door. And if this is a life-threatening situation and those individuals have to look around for a shovel and a chipper and start cleaning and everything, that could be enough time that disaster could strike. So, if you got access to your neighborhood website, put something on it, put it on Facebook, mention it. If it's an elderly person or something in your neighborhood or something, maybe get your shovel out, take five minutes, go over and clean it up yourself because we're getting more snow out there today, we're expecting more on the weekend. So, this is just a safety precaution. It could save your life, it could save the life of a loved one. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Erickson. Clear your light, sir. Next up Supervisor Porter.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody, today started at noon, is Give Big Green Bay. It goes until noon tomorrow. They've teamed up with Greater Green Bay Community Foundation along with the Green Bay Packers with a 24-hour online giving event that's designed to raise awareness of the important work being done in our community and it also highlights the work of 40 local nonprofit organizations here. So, if you have a chance, give to Big Green Bay.
Very good. Thank you. Clear your light, ma'am. Next up Supervisor Dantin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just like to recognize you're paying Judy Conuson, Brown County Extension Officer, successful 60th annual Brown County Tiest of Wisconsin Health. I remember I was at Warhol last night. I was there, there was a lot of people there, it was very successful. You did a great job. Thank you, Judy.
Very good. Thank you. Clear your light, sir. Next up Supervisor Seaver under announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to briefly comment on a couple of news items. First was a Department of Public Works employee down in Milwaukee who passed away. And then also the news recently was a shooting in Swamaco, a murder in Swamaco that involved child custody. Just reminded me, especially going through class and comp and other things, that the employees of Brown County that put themselves in danger or put their lives on the line for Brown County that aren't always recognized. I just wanted to say thank you to the Brown County employees, in particular those that, you know, go unsung, are unsung heroes that go without notice, just to tell them thank you for the work that they've done for Brown County and we really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Well said Supervisor Seaver. Thank you. Clear your light, sir. Any other announcements of supervisors? Seeing no lights are given, we'll move on to late communications. Any late communications, please engage your device. First up Supervisor Erickson.
Thank you, Chairman Wainahan. This is in regard to some of the speakers that we had. Have the clerk of courts, John Valleys, meet with HR to determine why the department employees have been mortified and that reconsideration be given to the employees' classifications of the personnel of this very important department. This meeting should also have a cross-section of department employees.
Where do you, I mean...
Well, if we're directing, if we're the court set this up, I don't know if we directed right to John and then have him refer it back to admin or executive?
You can refer it to him. I mean, eventually he's got to go to committee.
Let's refer it to him and admin. Does that make sense?
If those are your wishes. Late calls, late republics, safety.
All right, okay.
But it's also common falls into the admin of the class and comp. You could do both. Send it through the clerk and to admin of the republics, safety.
I'm sorry, what? And refer to...
Yeah, they meet the same night, it's perfect.
Yep.
Thank you. Clear your light and you have a chance. Next up Supervisor Boyer, late communication.
Thank you, Chairman Wainahan. This is a communication for discussion and possible action concerning how the sheriffs and DA's offices can engage in formal partnerships with religious organizations in investigating allegations of sexual abuse. This would include specific training for these types of investigations.
You bet. Thank you. Clear your light, sir. We move on to, please Chairman Lunn.
Well, I was just thinking about this class and comp thing. Can't we just make a motion, pass on class and comp, but take out the clerk of courts department because there's some dispute about that?
Well, when we get to the agenda, you can make a motion to refer because there could be other departments affected.
Let's move on, Mr. Chairman.
So, I would, do you have any late communication? Thank you. Supervisor Porter, late communication?
Communication to look at adopting a statutory authority to allow taxpayers the option to pay property taxes in installments directed to admin and court counsel.
Thank you. Supervisor DeLaurie, late communication?
Thank you, Chairman. I have to make the following communication. I would like the county to consider participating...
Supervisor DeLaurie, do you hold?
Sure.
I can't hear folks. Go ahead.
I would like the county to consider participating in the Village of Denmark Business Development Corridor by utilizing the county Public Works Department for certain related construction activities and request referral to the PDNT Committee as the following agenda item. Discussion and possible action regarding a resolution supporting the Village of Denmark Business Development Corridor. Copies of the proposed resolution be distributed by court counsel to PDNT members at or before the 2/25/19 PDNT meeting.
PDNT, very well.
And the second one, refer to county executive. This is a follow-up to a couple of the public speakers tonight. To refer the attached decision-making timeline to county executive Troy Streckenbach for feedback and possible action. This timeline summarizes the actions leading up to the currently installed and proposed installations of transverse rumble strips in very close proximity to Brown County homes. I'm sharing this information with you so you can determine if a transparent, accurate, and objective process was used by your Public Works Director, Paul Fontecchio, in his decision to install rumble strips in very close proximity at homes. The items attached are not all-inclusive list of the issues as I was provided the results of the open records request last night and have not gone through everything yet. I'm asking you to take a closer look at the decision-making process and consider directing Commissioner Fontecchio to address all these process issues prior to subjecting rural residents to the installation of rumble strips abnormally close to their homes. Thank you in advance for your attention on this matter and asking for your feedback you sent to me and those residents who spoke during public comment tonight.
The county executive, Willby?
Thank you.
Do you clear your light, sir? Supervisor Landwehr, late communication?
Thank you, Chairman Wainahan. I request the procedure be considered on how meeting date changes be communicated to all board members.
What do you want?
I don't know.
Do you want it to all the standing committees?
Let's just go to one.
I vote executive.
Okay.
Executive? Do you clear your light, sir? Anyone else, late communications? Supervisor Tran.
This is for Edwright, Corporation Counsel to draft a resolution to the governor in support of continuing the Nelson stewardship program. This program's mission is to preserve valuable natural areas and wildlife habitat. Program is set to expire in 2020.
Very good. Edwright and Corporation Counsel. Thank you Supervisor Tran. Clear your light. Supervisor Dwayne, late communication?
Yeah, thank you. This is just sent to refer to our attorney's office, to send a communication to every supervisor on how we should react from giving communications, on how you don't direct your comments, good or bad, against whether it's a supervisor or another employee. I think... I think that doesn't do anybody any good. If you don't like how they're acting to your communications in the past or now, I think it's irrelevant and I think we gotta respect one another, so.
Court counsel?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Clear your light, sir. Anyone else? Any late communications? Any late communications Supervisor Duane? Do you clear your light, please, sir? Seeing no other lights are lit, we'll move on. There's nothing under number six, thus we move into confirmation appointment of the county executive. He forces an appointment of Edward Morales to the Board of Health to complete a recently vacated term expiring December 21st, 2019. Motion to approve by Supervisor Shadow. Do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Porter. Under discussion. Under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next we move on to confirmation appointment of citizens, redistricting advisory committee members.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Chairman Lund, who made these appointments. Second by Supervisor Porter. Under discussion. Supervisor Larson.
Just one question. I want to preface this by, I don't mean that with disapproval. But as far as these, this board, I noticed Supervisor Seaver is on this and he is recently ran as a member of political party. Was there consideration given to that when determining the members or makeup of this board? I don't know exactly how we got to this listing names, and I'm directing sort of, Mr. Lund, because you kind of put this together. I was just wondering-
Well, we only had four members of the county board that chose, that put out that they would want to be on the committee. And I asked, and Supervisor Moynihan was one of them also, and I asked if he really wanted to be on that. And he said, he said that was fine. And I thought that Supervisor Seaver would actually maintain objectivity as he has over the many years that I've been with him on the board.
Supervisor Tran and I both found your information.
I never got your information.
Supervisor Larson, can you still?
The only reason I ask, I was just wondering, did we collect any information from the individuals on the list? I only recognize a few of these names personally. Did we collect any information?
Yeah, we have, we have information on you. Yeah, it's all in the pack.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
So everybody's bipartisan. Supervisor Larson, does the floor? Anything further Supervisor Larson?
Okay. I guess just one final question. Are you comfortable with the list of names as far as objectivity? And I'm asking this question because I know it's image matters.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the list of names. I mean, if Supervisor Seaver is comfortable being on the committee and being objective, I'm fine with him. I'd ask Supervisor Seaver if that would affect you.
Well, he could always step aside.
Yeah.
You can name someone else.
You answered my question, so.
Okay, thank you. Understood. If you clear your light, please Supervisor Laffey.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I believe that this is a good board. A lot of people are not part of the community. And I think that it's a, looks like a good cross-section of our community. And I did not volunteer because I belong to the Little Villain Boarders, so I thought that would be a conflict. I would have liked to have been on it, but I did not. So, yeah, I think we have a very good board.
I know, okay.
Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you. Do you clear your light, ma'am? Supervisor Larson, can you clear your light, please? Supervisor Evans, under discussion.
Yeah, thank you Mister Chairman. There are some people on here that have some very good, great respect for a couple of people that I don't, that have very different philosophy, right? And then there's one, that's Mr. Ken Bukowski, who used to be our Corporation Counsel. And I don't have much respect for Mr. Bukowski when he was Corporation Counsel. We felt that a lot of things he did were inappropriate. He would be very demeaning to people. Mr. Lund may remember this, Mr. Moynihan, Mr. Nicholson certainly remember this. I think shadow all and took things off his side at times. So I would just ask for separation. That's your premise on these, because Mr. Bukowski- The problem is, folks, is that, you know, we had this with redistricting before and they group people together and, you know, then all of a sudden it was last minute and I got changed. So Mr. Bukowski understands that there's some people on this board that probably don't care for him, that he doesn't care for either. So, I mean, and so then you start thinking, what motivation is he going to have to make sure that this is done correctly? Or does he have a motivation to say, you know what, I'm gonna screw Evans because he's a jerk, I'm gonna screw Nicholson because he's a jerk? No, I absolutely believe that. I mean, I'm serious. I don't have much respect for Mr. Bukowski. I didn't think he was a very good Corporation Counsel at the time. I was extremely happy when he moved on and retired. I know that he's with Ashwabanon now and we may have a great working relationship with him, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think he belongs on this committee at all. I don't think he belongs on this committee at all.
Thank you. Clear your light, please Supervisor Porter.
I was just gonna say, I don't, I know a few of these people, but I think that our board members can control what happens in the meeting or whatever happens in these meetings.
Some of the board members may not like me.
Well, I have no comment on that. And so, that is silly. I think we're all adults and we can act like adults. And I would hope that Vice Chairman Lund would be a good moderator in these meetings along with Supervisor Seaver and Supervisor Wilson. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you clear your light, ma'am? Vice Chairman Lund?
Well, I just wanted to say that, that I feel like that these meetings should be very open meetings and we should have the floor open and give a lot of information from anybody that's interested in attending these. And whatever actions that the committee takes, it's not gonna be to go against any supervisor or anybody that's holding public office. It's just for the future of the community to make sure that this process is open and that people can feel good about the process in the dance, you know, after we take the next census that the redistricting will reflect the community values.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Clear your light Supervisor Ballard. Under discussion.
My understanding and, you know, apologies, Supervisor Lund, if you didn't get my application. I believe I responded to it correctly, but my issue is more with the academics on the committee. I believe the purpose was to get someone with a political science background that understood that. It doesn't look like this gentleman, Mr. Joint, has that.
We amended that in the past.
We have amended. We did not get-
No one from St. Norbert or UWGB?
Well, when I talked to the political science department at St. Norbert College, no one was aware until I asked them of this committee. So if you want an academic, you know, I'd be happy to find you.
Brother Ballard, we had asked the, we had asked the staff to make sure that everybody was notified of this. We had sent out things to the press gazette, press releases twice on this. I mean, we tried to get a good cross-section of people, you know. And I would believe that Mr. Joint would still have a very good perspective.
I'm not, this is not me against him.
I understand.
This is more about his academic background. If it's, we're choosing something from an academic background, we're not doing a quality test on that person as a human. We're doing against their research and their, what the work they've done.
And I would still ask anybody from that type of academic background to come to the meetings. And if they want to, if they want to put on a program for it and they have some real insights, I would welcome that.
I guess my question would be, what's the purpose of having an academic if we're not having someone with an academic background in this area? What's the purpose of having that position?
Well, he's still academic. Hey, this thing went wrong and wrong. This is the will of the supervisor. You have the floor?
But I mean, the whole piece is like, that I go back to, again, I submitted my application. I actually have more experience in the area than this gentleman does as an academic than that, you know? Like, I could search my email and find the email I responded to the county board office. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Clear your light, sir. Okay, we have separation, so.
Chairman, I shouldn't be left.
Nope. Try it. There you go. Supervisor Castor.
I'm just asking, and some of the supervisor, I understand we're gonna have separation, but Ken Bukowski, I came on the board shortly after he was done and I don't know that much about him, other than what people said. But there's no resume in here for him at all. It's just a letter saying his name on it and stuff. I would like him to submit a resume and say the same one else, because I do not, I do not have one. And I checked with some other supervisors, they do not have one either, so.
Well, he's working with that group, there's that map. Fair Maps, I know he's part of that.
I would just like-
I asked him for a letter. I didn't ask him for a resume. And when I asked for the resume, it was before the board and then we decided to take it back. So, you can vote him up or down. He's a former Corporation Counsel. He's dealt with redistricting and working with Fair Maps. If you don't like him, don't vote for him.
It's not a matter of not liking. I'd like to know more about him and there's nothing in here about him.
Very well. Okay. Clear your light, please. We have asked for separation. All the candidates other than Mr. Bukowski, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. On the case of Mr. Bukowski, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Name? Use the board. What is this?
This is-
Bukowski, yes or no?
Yep.
Supervisor Van Dyke? And that passes. Moving on.
No, we didn't separate.
So, under Chair Report, once again condolences to you and your family. Supervisor denies the loss of your father. Never an easy time. It's all part of, PDC is all part of me. Get your pencil out and paper. I have some dates for you folks. November 6th will be the budget meeting. November 6th.
At 9:00 AM.
Correct. Following day, 6:00 PM if necessary. And a veto session, if necessary, November 14th. Should be locked in, but-
What time is veto session?
6:00 PM.
How much time?
6:00 PM. If we have one. If we communicate it over time.
November 7th be 9 o'clock as well?
6:00 PM.
As well, yes.
If needed, the next day. November 6th. The morning of the budget meeting. Following day, if necessary, November 7th at 6:00 PM. If a veto session is required, Thursday, the 14th. But hopefully we won't have to come to the 7th and the 14th. Congratulations to Supervisor Buckley. Moving on to the general on April 2nd. And congratulations, though I'm sure a bitter pill Supervisor Evans, you fought a good fight. And it's very appreciative. You put yourself out there to want to serve your people, the people of Green Bay in another capacity. I have the latest total, as I customarily do for the BCTA case against the half-cent sales tax. They have now caused, the litigation of BCTA has caused Brown County taxpayers $218,036.67. And I believe it's before the judge, April 26th, that we'll get a ruling. Well, it'll be heard and then we'll get a ruling probably within 30 days thereafter. So stay tuned for that. What I also like to do in my remarks tonight, something a little different. I prepared some remarks. So I'm gonna use this opportunity as a soapbox. I don't do it too often, so bear with me. So tonight I expect a spirited discussion in regard to the 500,000 K, the 500,000 CBB loan resolution. The board approval shall assist in the CBB's request to construct its visitor center. I need not tell you that this is a vitally important vote, important not only for the CBB, but also for Brown County in northeast Wisconsin. In many ways, the CBB is an extension of county government. The CBB not only promotes tourism, but they are also our ambassadors of economic development, exposing the virtues of our county to both those who may want to know the area seeking employment and those who may want to create employment opportunities. It is also a place of discovery and learning for those who visit it. Let us afford the CBB the ability to meet the fiscal threshold required to put shovel to ground this coming April. By not providing this loan, a loan which is similar to the one which was provided at County Golf Course in 2013, could very well become a great setback in regard to the construction timeline. I remind everyone, this is not a giveaway. This is a loan. When discussed at the committee level, I had addressed how some Wisconsin counties and communities like tax dollars specifically for their local CBVs. Before you tonight is a compromise. We are one of 32 NFL counties in the United States. And if we cannot assist the CBB on this measure, I would go so far as to say potential donors of the project and those who have already pledged support are watching. If the county cannot help themselves by assisting the CBB in the creation of a new state-of-the-art facility, then in many ways, I find the entire project in peril. Do what's right and approve the resolution in terms. And with that, we'll move on to the county executives report. Mister Executive, there you are. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Well, I think today's snowfall, I think it's fitting to kind of, one, recognize the Public Works Departments, the crews, both the mechanics who are fixing the machines as they are breaking down during the cold weather, the crew that are out plowing the roads. You know, I think it's fitting for us to make sure that we recognize all the snowplow drivers and crews and make sure the machines are running properly. I did receive quite a bit of positive feedback in terms of just the way that the new snowplow optimization route is working. I know that two years ago, was it two years ago Paul that we instituted it? It had some bugs. Last year, I think we received a couple of calls about concerns of how the roads were being plowed. But this year, with the amount of events that we just went through, we received a lot of positive feedback. And so, kudos to the staff. I don't believe anybody was injured. And the safety, of course, is, you think about the first responders, everyone who's trying to get to work, or the hospitals, whatever work that is taking place in terms of the 24/7 operations, they need to be able to get to work in a timely manner. And so, I think when we look at one of the core functions of Brown County Government, it is highways and making sure that our county and state roads are taken care of. Obviously, from the sheriff's office, who are out working, we saw a number of communications that came out of the sheriff's office asking residents of the area to really be mindful about how important it is whether or not you leave your home or, you know, that evening, because they're trying to keep people off the road so that they can get back and clearing some of the accidents that took place. So, kudos to our first responders, our public safety department, and our highway department over this period of time. And we got a couple more months, or hopefully not. We have another month of snow.
Three weeks.
What did the hurry thing say? Needless to say, hopefully, everybody continues to be safe. Everyone continues to be safe and get an opportunity- Everyone continues to be safe, and if you get an opportunity to say thank you to all of our first responders, Public Safety Area, and the Public Works Department, make sure you do so. If you haven't had an opportunity, with the snow comes the opportunities to enjoy some of the facilities that Brown County invests in, such as the reforestation camp. And I was out there Saturday night, taking advantage of the lighted trail, it's 2.9 miles for anyone who's curious, and it was beautifully groomed. I think we have some of the greatest assets within our community, whether it's us deciding to follow the Fox River Trail, or taking advantage of the trails, the cross-country skiing that the parks offer. So if you get an opportunity, I would encourage you to go out there. At Park House, and they have snowshoes that you can rent out, they have the trails available for you just to enjoy the afternoon. Kudos to the staff who are, you know, keeping those trails groomed for people who enjoy them. I wanted to go back, and I kind of missed over this in terms of the highway shot. Paul is not aware that I'm gonna be talking about this, but it just goes to show you the level of things that are happening within the 1,900 employees that work for Brown County. And so, I'm gonna read a letter, or email, quickly, that was from Tracy Earl, from the 911 Public Safety Communications Department. She wrote to Paul, "February 10th, 2019, one of your parole drivers, Jason Reedy, Lanes Corner Shop, helped to protect a driver who was ejected during a rollover accident on SB 1, I-43 on East Mason Street. At 11:20 a.m., we received several calls referencing an accident with injuries, and the driver ejected. Reedy was in the area and swiftly came to the aid of the injured driver in the median. He came over the radio at 11:21 to advise dispatch and stayed with the injured male until rescue could arrive. This was extremely dangerous due to the ice and black ice covering roadways with multiple accidents coming in for several hours. Reedy risked himself in leaving his vehicle to help the injured party, and is remanded for his actions that day. Thank you for all your team does on a regular basis, and it is our hope that Mr. Reedy is recognized for his efforts, respect to Tracy." You know, when you see these things come through, you know, you realize the small things that people do in the heat of the moment, and again, as we recognize that we just went through a major snowstorm, it's nice that Tracy took the time from the 911 Center to send a notice to Paul, recognizing those efforts, and Paul was kind enough to share it with me, and I'm now sharing it with you. So Paul, thank you, and make sure that Jason is recognized. Tonight, we hear Mr. Olick, who is our new Veteran Service Officer. I know that he was able to give a interview. Joe, if you want to stand up and just wave to the group. As noted last month, Joe has many years of experience, he's a resident of Brown County, and we're really excited to have him as part of our team. As noted before, I asked a group of veterans in our community to be part of the Search and Screen Committee, that ultimately selected Mr. Olick to be our new Veteran Service Officer. So Joe, thank you for being part of our team. As you guys noticed in your packets this evening, you're going to be voting on something that you guys decided to, kind of put in terms of tools that the county can provide for economic development in our community, the PACE Financing Program. And so, this evening, you're gonna be voting on the public authority, which is utilizing the PACE Financing, and as noted, you guys received an invite to the soft opening for Hotel Northland. You'll be voting on that this evening. It's one of those things that you guys saw the foresight and the importance of allowing these type of capital projects to be financed through energy savings, and here with the project with the Hotel Northland, we're able to participate in that project, and I think for everybody who's had the opportunity to go inside the building, if you were there back in its glory years, you certainly were reminded of those days, and for those who were never worry able to go in there during the glory years, you certainly are in awe about what the work was done with the renovation. So, it's, I think it's appropriate and a great opportunity for Brown County to participate in making this project successful with the refinancing, and the ability for us to take advantage of an economic development tool that you approved back in 2017. To be very clear, in terms of the risk to Brown County taxpayers, we carry home the risk. This is essentially handled through a third party, it's within the documents, but it's an ability for us to provide for it through the PACE Financing. So, should all be very proud that as Brown County Supervisors, you're involved with the Hotel Northland. Again, the last thing I really wanted to talk about is, as you all know, we're beginning the process of the budget. It's kind of interesting that you've already set the dates for the budget hearing and the veto session. As you guys are all aware, I've worked really hard to make sure that the budget that we present reflects a lot of your initiatives. It tries to address the bigger picture of what we're trying to produce in terms of a quality county, and so I'm hoping that that veto session is not necessary. But it's important for us to be very mindful that net new construction is very tight, and the cost of running a county of our size, we have to continuously look for efficiencies in how we run government. So, with that, enjoy the reading. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, sir?
It's really not a question, but I gotta just pot around to something when you talked about Joe Olick, who's taking over, introduced us to him. I got to meet him the first time. I was, and bear with me, I'm sorry that I'm doing this when we're trying to get out of here. But we're, I was with my brother-in-law, who is a Vietnam veteran, for Veterans Day at one of the gambling games, and I was walking through, and I was talking to some of the people at the desk, that were out in the halls and stuff like that, and, you know, and stuff like that. Joe had walked up to me and introduced me, he recognized me. And I, you know, I told him, I said, "Well, I can't wait, you know, I'm gonna vote for you, and I can't wait till you get started." And I kind of told him the story, all my brother-in-law had passed away from Agent Orange, and we're trying to get his medals, and some of the stuff that he never got from the service and all that, and we've been going through staff for like four years now. We weren't getting any headway. Well, I never thought anything of it, but that Monday, I got a call from one of the representatives, one of their employees, a young lady, and asked about it, and I told her, and she goes, "Oh, here's what I need from you." So he gave us the information, all the stuff we needed, and got another letter, and last Monday, we received it all. I mean, he didn't tell me he was even doing this, but he remembered. I mean, he just, you know, I got a call from Madison, and this short period of time, that I waited four, four and a half years for, that couldn't get done, and he met me for five minutes. So I just wanted to let everybody know the kind of person he is.
Very good. Well stated.
Supervisor Duane, I just received an email about an individual who was working on trying to resolve some issues, and Mr. Olick has been able to do some, he understands, he's been in the Veteran Service Office for many years, I think are veterans in our community, and the reason why I think the Search and Screen Committee felt very strong about his candidacy is specifically exactly what you're saying. Yeah, thank you for recognizing that. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Supervisor Laurie, you have a question?
Just real quickly, I just want to echo what Troy said about Public Works in emergency situations. I want to thank Paul as well. That when we have large operations, we're moving water at a fire scene, it is a big relief when the county plow comes out, all results are out for our fill sites, and just to echo the, I guess, the sentiment, Public Works is a, it's a relief when we see the plows come out to assist on those roads.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on, there's nothing other, other reports, I can't speak tonight, so we move on to the reported initiation committee of January 6th, motion to approve by Supervisor denies. What number? Motion to approve by Supervisor Nicholson, second by Supervisor Seaver. Number four by Supervisor denies. Anything else pulled from the report? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Number four, Supervisor denies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring forward the Technology Services Monthly Report. It's not included, I don't believe it was included in the packet. I've asked Director Neverman to send it out. One of the concerns that I had, I asked Mr. Neverman previous month to outline a little bit more detail about the status of his department and the conditions and whatnot. I look at Technology Services much like infrastructure for the county. There is, just about every job in this county somehow or another relies on our technology, and it's continuing to get more and more. When you get the Technology Services Report, please be sure that you take a look at the comparative counties, the staffing, but then the big thing is, is that the backlog of projects, and you'll see that there is a backlog that is continuing to grow from that department. And as the County Exec said, they're just getting into their budgets. I believe Mr. Neverman's budget is one of the first ones he could be looking at, so I hope they would consider the impact that this is having, and if staffing is needed to correct this, or if there's other efficiencies that could be taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that stated, I'll accept the motion to approve number four. Well, to approve for the rest of the report, made by Vice Chairman Lund, second by Supervisor denies. Can you clear your light, please Supervisor denies? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Next is the reported Education and Recreation Committee of January 31st, motion to approve by Supervisor Landwehr, second by Supervisor Seaver. Anything pulled separately out of the report? Anything separately? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Next is the reported Executive Committee of February 11th, motion to approve by Vice Chairman Lund, second by, second by Supervisor Seaver. Anything pulled separately out of the report? Anything separately? Supervisor Seaver? Number 18?
Number 18?
Well, I struck the resolution, but you may want to direct that background, Executive.
Number 18.
Number 18, I'll stand. I want to refer back to, for the Trace- Okay, I have a motion, other than 18, to accept the report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, number 18, wanted to refer back to the Executive Committee, second by Supervisor Duane. All those in favor, referrals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We move on to Supervisor Seaver. We move on to the reported Human Services Committee of January 23rd, motion to approve by Supervisor Foyer, second by Supervisor Bruski. Anything pulled separately from the report? Anything separately? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We move on to the reported Planning and Development Transportation Committee of January 29th. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Erickson, do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Dantin. Anything pulled separately out of the report? Anything separately? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We move on to the reported Landcon Subcommittee of January 29th. Motion to approve by Supervisor Dantin, do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Erickson. Anything pulled separately out of the report? Anything separately? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We move on to the report of Public Safety Committee of February 6th.
We're moved.
Motion to approve by Supervisor Nicholson, second by Supervisor Buckley. Anything pulled separately out of the report? Anything separately? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We move on to Resolutions and Ordnances. First is 12, yes Supervisor LeFay? What can I say? We move on to 12A Resolution approving budget adjustments to various department budgets. I'll accept a motion at this time. Made by Supervisor Tran, second by Supervisor Buckley. Oh, you want, okay. Supervisor Buckley, second by Supervisor Landwehr, under discussion Supervisor Tran. Can you use your microphone, please?
I do have some questions with the Sheriff's Department. Do you know what this training? Is this something that's completely new to Brown County, or do we know what this is going to be, and not budgeted for it?
Are you speaking of the increasing grant revenues, or?
Yeah, I just have-
Oh, Director?
So, generally, and I'll defer to the Sheriff, of course, because this is his department, but if you see, there's a number of budget adjustments for the Sheriff's Department. When they prepare their budget, we don't always have grant funds, because we don't always know the specific amount of grants that we're gonna receive, so when we do receive a grant, you have to approve it. So a lot of these are just the funds that are coming through the Fed or through the state to perform specific operational things. So, for instance, there's an OWI Task Force, so we're gonna get some money from the state to run OWI stings. There's money for side soda for our boat, so if, you know, if a car goes in the lake, unfortunately, had happened, the bay, or no, the river, sorry. Many, many years ago, that could be used for that. So that's what a lot of those are. So all these that you see are not budgeted for in the budget, and in order to balance our budget, we have to make this increased revenue with an increased expense.
Supervisor Tran, so, for-
Yes, also for the homeland security with the robots, for the bomb squad, is Sheriff to Brown County and Alcoa Gimi? Who is gonna be the physical custodian of the robot in the maintenance?
I have to defer that one to the Sheriff. I don't know that one. So it is, I think the Sheriff is saying that Brown County owns it, and will have possession of it, and would be responsible for maintaining it?
So it's both, it's all by both by the M U to maintain it?
So as it specifically relates to the bomb squad, there's a memorandum of understanding between Alcoa Gimi and Brown County, it's a regional bomb squad. So technically speaking, the equipment's owned mutually by both of us. Most of that equipment that comes in is all grant-funded stuff, and we get it because of the regional support. When the state looks at, or the federal government looks at giving out grants, they're looking at regional, so it was designed, and it's designed as regional for a specific reason to be able to get those resources. Obviously, it's kept here because of some of the stuff we have here in Brown County, including Lambeau Field and other things. So, the bomb squad equipment is kept at the Sheriff's Office. It's jointly owned, and maintenance on it is shared by both of us. So, hopefully that answers your question.
Anything further Supervisor Tran? Very good, thank you. Clear your light, please. Any other questions with the Sheriff, or the Director of Line here, while they're- Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Next, 12B Resolution to approve electric line easement on the Fox River State Trail. Motion made by Supervisor LaFay, second by Supervisor Nicholson. Under discussion, under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Next is the Resolution establishing the observance of international migratory bird deal during May 28th. Motion made by Supervisor Ballard, second by Supervisor Zidzki. Under discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Next is the Orders to Admit in Brown County Code 2.05 Regarding Creating Sub or Ad Hoc Committees. Motion had Execu's to approve. I'll accept a motion. Motion to approve by Vice Chairman Lund, second by Supervisor Seaver, under discussion. Supervisor Dantin.
Thank you. As you addressed, I read this law four times, in lawyers' fees, but they do, you would have planned on some other committee. Every two years, we have to reapply against that, are we a parent committee of PD and D? Is that what we are?
This was referred back to Executive Committee, had the exec was pretty quick, there was no discussion, and then they moved on.
Landcon is not an ad hoc committee. This was ad hoc committees.
Oh, right, right. No, yeah, this wouldn't affect standing committees, this is only subcommittees.
That's a standing committee of the county board.
We have six standing committees.
But by, by statute, we have to have the LandCon, so.
Yeah.
This, this is a little bit different. Anything further Supervisor Dantin? Okay. Thank you. Can you clear your light, please?
It's not part of anything else. We don't think it matters.
Pardon?
It's not part of it, you have a good, it's executive, right? It's not, the Chair is not an executive, he's not staying as rest of the business. It's treated differently.
Right, because it's by statute.
But it's, it's not an ad hoc. That's the thing, it's not an ad hoc.
So, a lawyer, under discussion?
I'm, I was just wondering if, if, how the member from the public is elected or what.
Oh, thank you so much for that. Supervisor Dantin, can you clear your light, please? Or do you like to speak further? All those in favor of the resolutions, excuse me, the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. DI is simply a template, there's no action on that item, thus we move on to support of increased county child support funding. The Executive Committee was approved. Uh, motion made by Supervisor Seaver, do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Luntz, under discussion, under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Next is authorizing, authorizing county classification schedule and comp adjustment policy.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Supervisor Van Dyke, second by Supervisor Shadwell, under discussion. First up, Vice Chairman Lund.
Well, seeing that, that we have a problem with the, uh, the clerk of courts, uh, I'd like to refer that, that part of class and comp back to administration to look at.
So, you want to approve the resolution?
I would want to approve the resolution. We don't have any other people that came to be that, that are concerned, but this group is concerned, and I don't want to hold up the whole thing when I think it's, you know, eighty percent, very good. But this area, there's a problem, so I would want that to be looked at, and I don't want it approved tonight, because then it's going to be harder to get that change's name.
Director Lineiger?
Okay, so, a couple things. One thing I'd like to do is actually, and I typically don't do this, but actually address some of the public comments that were made. Um, so this is one department out of the thirty departments that we have, um, so please keep that in perspective. The other thing too is if you actually read the, the policy, um, we don't need to, to separate this hour to take a look at. The policy, the way it was designed allows for the flexibility for us to review it. So, when we went back to, or when the HR went to the clerk of courts office and said, listen, we're, we're not going to go through this because we're so far along, and we're not going to hold up the study because it's been held up for, what, two years now? Um, well, three years? Okay, five, seven years? I only had HR for the last couple months, so, in a little way. Um, so the, the issue is this, is that this can move forward, and it allows for the department administration, I should say, the HR department, to actually review, um, each position and/or the department. So, for the first year, we're actually going to go through and relook at, you know, roughly probably four or five departments plus high turnover pieces in case if we haven't fine-tuned this. So, what's going to happen is, after this passes, you're probably going to look at TS. Uh, I made a commitment to look at clerk of courts office, um, by a number of supervisors, specifically one at the end of the roll, the first C. Not, not this year, the other, on the other end. Um, or Supervisor Dantin, sorry. Um, so we, we will look at those, and what we're going to do is, we're going to go back and look, and use the same methodology. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to go look at the position. We're not going to say, hey, you know, the important thing is, you look at the position and say, okay, what position is the equivalent to other counties, and you look at that. We also look at case scale. So, we'll relook at that. And then what we'll also do is, we'll look at other positions within the county, but the thing is, is what they do and what someone in finance does are different. But we will look at those cross things, and I'm not sure how this particular department, um, had so many issues, but I think as a percentage out of sixteen hundred employees one department, I think we did pretty well so far. Um, so this policy actually allows for this, so you don't actually have to hold this up and say, well, you know, let's, let's put this back and have it back, because otherwise you're going to wind up in the same issue you had last year. You're going to have all the, all the employees coming forward, showing you the evidence, HR's going to show you the evidence, and we're going to wind up in that same situation. So, if you do do that, you know, I would recommend, if you don't pass this tonight, hold up the whole report, and let's go through that process again, and then we can go look at every other department employee just to make sure everyone's okay with that, and then we can move forward with that.
Vice Chairman Lund, you still?
Well, I mean, uh, with what, in light of what Director Lineiger said, I would withdraw my motion, but, uh, I would want that department looked at, and if they're not looked at, I would be very critical.
He just stated that. He just stated that, so you're withdrawing your motion to, to a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll, I'll approve. Yeah, we already have a motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. My bad. Okay. Okay, under discussion. Clear your light, Vice Chairman Lund. Next up, Supervisor Luntz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just have a follow-up question related kind of to what you were talking about. Uh, I like the idea of approving tonight making adjustments, necessarily be that part. My only question is, is regard to budgeting. If it is determined that, uh, there needs to be an adjustment to that particular department after we've approved all the other changes, uh, where, where do we sit with that financially? Because my understanding that we're using up that bottom money to make this compensation plan, are we not?
Sure. So, if, if the board, uh, thank you, that's a good question Supervisor. So, if, if you remember back in the 2018 budget, we set around, set aside roughly about eight hundred thousand. Uh, in 2019, we carried that forward and rebudgeted that for levy dollars. Uh, so we have roughly about eight hundred thousand. Three hundred thousand, um, is going to bring people below minimum to minimum. And then two hundred thousand is for market wage adjustment, um, which is outlined in the policy. That allows us the flexibility that, uh, the one employer talked about. Uh, and then the money, then additional three hundred thousand, then will be, um, set aside to bring people that are below min, uh, I'm sorry, at min, closer to the midpoint. Um, it should be roughly close to around fifteen percent. Don't quote me on that number, because employees will get their calculator on, do it to the six decimal points, say, hey, I'm at fourteen point three percent. So, that's, that's kind of where it is. So, how, how I imagine this, in, in looking at, um, briefly, uh, from what I had, the clerk of courts issue, I think a lot of that doesn't have to do with them being at the minimum level. I think really what their concern is, is they're at the, uh, the red line level. But you have to remember that, you know, this isn't a static, you know, we're not going to do what we did before where we, we pass something, and then we just sat on it for four, five, or four years without making adjustments. That's why every year we're going to go out, grab departments, review them, see what the market is, look at the problem areas that we're having, and then focus our money there. Um, and the goal is to get people within market, not all at midpoint, and just, because the, the problem Supervisor Luntz is, not everyone showed up at admin in the Executive Committee, so I'm just kind of giving a little bit more detail. So, the goal is to get everyone between, uh, the minimum and the, the maximum. So, we want to get them within that range. The scale will move, so if you're at max, you're not always going to be at max. And the red line is, um, what the judge was talking about is, you know, there may be a bonus. So, what we wanted to do is, the, the folks that are above the maximum, those dollars that they would normally get through a COLA would be put in the market adjustment fund to help the other employees at the low end move closer to the midpoint. So, that's the theory behind that. Um, it's a way to use, utilize, utilize the resources over the time of the year to make those adjustments, because if we want to put everyone at midpoint or higher, red levy limit, we don't have the capacity. Over time, if we continue to put a little bit of market adjustment fund, we can. Got to get to your question. And, so, thank you, I appreciate it in a way, Supervisor. To get your question, how I would envision this is, I think a lot of those people are probably at the, at the top end. I think there's very few probably at the bottom end, and if they were, I have that two hundred thousand set aside, or what I could do is, um, that extra three hundred thousand, which I probably wouldn't want to do because employees have been waiting for this for quite some time, I could set, uh, I could do a quick calculation, and if they're close, I could just set that aside for, for those adjustments. So, I believe I have the flexibility to make those changes.
Supervisor Luntz, you still approve?
And because we're, that we're talking about maximums, is this something that if they were, say, say we were to bump the range up a little bit after a review, um, we don't necessarily have to pay them more. Now, it's something that would be budgeted, next year's budget was their normal raise, should they get one, is that correct?
So, just remember this. So, and, so just to be clear, so no one is having any money taken away from them through a demotion. So, that's not it. All, all we're seeing is, is we're setting the range. So, let's say I'm a housekeeper. Max is seventeen, or max is nineteen, uh, mid is fifteen, and low is ten. So, let's say the people are at nine, we're going to move them up to ten, and then, uh, we're going to move them up over here. But the people in the, that are above, like, say twenty, they're going to be red line. Um, and then if they get that one percent, that one percent goes in a market adjustment fund, which will allow the, the people, when we bring them in, to try to move more towards the market. So, that's, that's the kind of theory behind that.
Well, I guess my question's a little more specific. So, say, say you have an employee who's currently making twenty-two, the current comp plan puts them at twenty, but say after you review, you determine that the max should actually be twenty-four. Is there going to be any financial hit to us with our budgeting for this year?
No, 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 because I, I, thank you, I apologize. Yeah, so, what, what we're doing is, that eight hundred thousand, all that money is going for is to, to take care of the people below market, to move them up and then up here. Just because if they're at midpoint or higher, the, they're not, they're not getting an increase. This money isn't for that. The money for this is to get people within the market. So, our goal to be competitive is we want to pay in the market. We don't want to pay more than the maximum amount that we have to, but we don't want to pay below the minimum, because then that's where we have the high turnover problems, which we have experienced in Health and Human Services and Child Support. So, this helps move those people, uh, a little closer to, um, the minimum, or the, the middle, so we can forego those issues.
So, there's no budgeting harm to us, uh, making an adjustment at some point, like a month or two, to a specific?
No, the, the only benefit to the employee on that is if, if they're at the top end, is that next year, um, with levy limits, if there's enough for COLA, that means they won't get their weight, they won't get their increase, uh, taken away from them and give it to the people that were trying to move on.
So, that would be, it would be an issue that would affect next year's budget, not this year's budget?
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, thanks.
And then just to be clear Supervisor Luntz, and thank you for giving a little land to him. Um, the other, the other, the other issue too is, every year the county board through, uh, we do a benefits resolution, and then we also do a wage resolution. In that wage resolution, if you decide not to do redlining, you can give that direction in that resolution, and that's what it is for a year. So, you, you always have the, the building to supple policy and, uh, the compensation portion.
Thanks, my question, but do you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Given that knowledge, I, I would agree to approve this, uh, with the understanding that, uh, that particular department, uh, will be reviewed, uh, as soon as possible. I do believe they raise some legitimate concerns that you can at least look at, um, a little bit closer.
Yeah, actually, I, today I had some staff start looking into it a little bit closer.
Thanks Supervisor Luntz, clear your light, please. Next up, Supervisor Denies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo Supervisor, Vice Chairman Lund's and Supervisor Luntz's concerns about the clerk of courts office. Uh, I've heard, uh, a number of complaints from the employees in that area, and definitely raise some concerns. I'm, uh, to hear Mr. Lineiger is going to be addressing that is, uh, is good to hear. Um, there are some things though, I think that I'd just like to get on record, just to make sure that the employees understand, um, I think it's what we, Mr. Lineiger and I talked before. No one gets, if somebody's above red line today, and the, when this goes into effect, their wage is not dropped down to red line tomorrow, is that correct?
No, we, we don't drop any, no one's losing any money, there's no wage drop, period. They're just simply not. If something happens to someone, let me know, because that, we just don't do that.
I just want to make sure, because that is one of, one of the thoughts that are out there, is that that, if we pass this today, tomorrow, their wage is going to go from twenty-five to twenty-two dollars an hour, and that's not going to happen. Um, my understanding on this is that it's, it, it comes up to that next year's budget, and this board, they decide they want to give a COLA to somebody that's above red line, the board can't do that, have that budget resolution taken. Um, so there is no, no effect there. Um, and I'm going to echo again what has been said here. Uh, I would support this, knowing there is some provisions in there to be able to, uh, to make these changes for the individual employees, some of those other departments that I've heard from, you know, that, those individual departments can be addressed, and if this particular department is addressed separately, I would support this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Clear your light, please. Next up, Supervisor Shadwell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I support the, uh, comp and class study proposal as we have written it. A lot of variables that you have heard about now, discussion were key to the bringing this to you tonight. Uh, the whole eight hundred thousand was not given in a certain way, it was divided into the three categories, as Chad said. Three hundred thousand to get many employees in Brown County who are getting less than the minimum. Those people deserve to be moved up. Three hundred thousand for movement of people who are not at the midpoint, but maybe at the minimum, or a little bit above, they deserve it. There was two hundred thousand that we then decided would be, be able to utilize in this year, in case there are some needs. As we all know, it's only February, and hire some positions, we're going to have some changes. But this is well thought out. Even the idea of clerk of courts was already mentioned way before this meeting as one of the first ones to look at. So, I knew that coming here tonight. What you've got to understand though is, if we don't implement this plan tonight, all the employees are going to be affected, in some way negatively, I believe, because you're just going to start rehashing what we've been rehashing for years. I don't want to do that again. This is a classic comp study that Valley provides an answer for tonight, but it provides a plan, as Chad extemporaneously explained, for the view journey. So, that's why I ask for your support in this. Uh, it's been well thought out, well researched, and I think this is the way to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Shadwell. Clear your light, sir. Well, next go to Supervisor Erickson.
Thank you, Chairman Lund. I do agree with Supervisor Luntz. I don't think we should hold this up, but I, as you know, I put a, uh, communication thing, communication in, uh, for this very issue, and, uh, I believe we're sending it to a couple of different departments, but, uh, I would, uh, ask, uh, courtesy of the Chair to add, uh, human resources, uh, specifically Chad, and when they get together, maybe Chad, you could go and sit on, and I, I think you have explained it to people that don't understand it a hundred percent, uh, rather elegantly, uh, schmoosh, 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 but, uh, it's a living doctrine, and it, and it can be hypothetically changed at any time, and I think if you get together with, uh, Clerk Vanderleest and, and get, uh, across section of the employees together and explain this to them, I, I got the feeling, and I, I really felt that wasn't going to happen, but it seemed like some of these people have two concerns, like, maybe they're going to lose some money, or they're never, ever going to get a raise again. they're gonna lose some money, or they're never, ever gonna get a raise again. And I think we gotta get together with that department, give them some clarification, and have them understand it. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Erickson, clear your light, sir. Next up Supervisor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a lot of you know, since I've been on this board for about seventeen years, I've never really supported any of the class of comp. The reason I don't support the class of comps, because it's always seems to be that we're penalizing our long-term employees, I've seen this throughout the years. I think we should hold this up, and I think we should hold up the section with the clerk of courts. I appreciate what the policy says, and how we can, as an administration, look at it. However, if we, you know, hold this section, we, as a county board, can now keep an eye on it. Not just hand it off to administration, because it said, "Well, we approved this a policy, and you know, it's gonna be off, and they can deal with it, blah, blah, blah," we hear it all. But the employees came to us tonight to ask for our help. They came to us because they said, "We went to our supervisor," or their boss, we'll say, their manager, Mr. Van der Leest, and they didn't really seem to feel comfortable at that, not nothing against Mr. Van der Leest, but he maybe just didn't have the answers. Then Judge Zakowski comes, but, I mean, our employees are here, and they have a problem with it. So as a board member, we should be concerned about our employees, that they have a specific issue. So it's our job, then, to address it through the appropriate governmental channels as a board. So we can say, "Yes, we're gonna support the other items, but we're gonna hold this." And we want a report back then, next month, from administration, on the actual steps that went through. What did we do? Wow, we maybe sat down with all the employees, we explained everything, blah, 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 and get that put out to us. Because obviously, there's a problem, and there's an issue that our employees are having. So, I mean, and it's nothing new, we do this all the time, where we specifically pull something, and then charge administration with doing X, Y, and Z, and then reporting back to us, and then we approve it. This is important. You can see that we have long-term employees, you know, that are feeling that they're kind of being taken advantage of, or they're a little confused by it. And, I mean, I understand the COLA thing, and I understand three hundred thousand, and the move up and all that, but if you always hear, it seems that we're penalizing our long-term employees. And I just have a problem with that. So we don't have a motion right now to hold this clerk of courts, clerk of courts item. I'll make that motion, because I think it's important that we just say, we're gonna, we'll pass the other portions of this class of comp.
So you're asking for separation?
And, well, we're gonna hold this, and I expect administration to come back to us in a month, and say, "This is the steps that we did."
We step right, we can't separate them all.
Of course you can. So we do it all the time.
So I would be, it would be a request for division. If the document you're requesting to divide all deals with the same subject matter, the board would vote on that. If the document you're asking to divide deals with several different types of subject matter, then division is granted as a matter of right. In this case, I would say this all deals with the same subject matter, a motion for division would be in order, but in my opinion, you would have to vote on that.
Right. And we will, just like we did the employees. Anything further Supervisor Evans? We'll give you the separation.
It's not separation. Is that what you want, is it by separation, or by?
He just said you can't.
Well, you could. There's a number of ways to do this. You can do a motion, you can make this motion to approve all parts except for the clerk of courts. There's different ways to go about this.
But that's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yeah, 'cause there is no motion.
Put it in ready for the clerk, please. Do I have a second?
What's the motion?
To approve the resolution before us, other than clerk of courts. Supervisor Denies, second. Under discussion on the motion. Anything further Supervisor Evans?
No.
Okay, clear your light, please. Next up Supervisor Seaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may first, I mean, well, let me just say this, let me get this out of the way first. I've talked to Director of Administration about this, and I'm gonna put in another communication. Supervisor Erickson did a very good job with his. As Chair of Administration Department, I'll make sure this is a line item agenda for, and we'll get this done before the end of the year, before this affects any employees. So this will be on the Administration Committee agenda as a separate line item, we'll have updates from Director of Administration through HR on what exactly is happening with the clerk of courts office, and we will get these redone by the end of the year. That's not gonna be an issue or a problem. So, I mean, ideally, I'm strictly in favor of passing this report, and we'll review it before anybody has any, before anything gets changed or adjusted in the clerk of courts office, we will have this reviewed and done before the budget, there's no doubt about that, no problem with that. So I would ask that we just pass this as is, and we will review it. Onto the motion we have, I mean, I don't know if we wanna spend a lot of time, I'm hoping it gets withdrawn, but I hope we don't spend a lot of time on this, but the document before us today, there is no clerk of courts section in it. It's done by classifications and grades, we've got grade eighteen all the way down to grade A, it looks like. So to pull the clerk of courts section out is very difficult, obviously, because there's no clerk of courts section. So, I mean, I don't know how much time we wanna spend on this. It's gonna be handled, it's gonna be done properly, it will be reviewed, I'm not sure what happened in that department, we'll get to the bottom of it, and we'll make sure that, you know, it's done fairly and done right. So, you know, whatever motions we make here tonight, I don't know how much time we wanna spend on the procedural portion of this, but I think it's gonna be very difficult to pull clerk of courts out of this document, because it's not outlined as departments outline as grades. So I just hope you vote this down, and then support the motion to approve, and it will be on the admin committee meeting, just for the fifteenth time, it will be on the agenda monthly, so thank you.
Thank you. Clear your light. Supervisor Evans, can you clear your light, please? Next up Supervisor Danteen.
Mr. Chairman, Congressman Chad, in reviewing these departments, I heard a lot of comments tonight about longevity, do you actually look at that? And secondly, you actually look at work load, and I heard some things that if they process one hundred thirty-four, like your county processes thirty-five, or you know, really, does this differ between how hardware actually working, based on Odegeni, you have Norwegen, is that looked at, or just wages?
No, it's not just wages. What we did is, what we tried to do is, our labor market is probably within thirty miles of our area. So we looked at all those counties, and then what we did also is, you know, we've gone through the job descriptions, the supervisor's supposed to know specifically what the employee does. We sit down with the supervisor, usually the department head, and say, "Okay, this is what we found, does this look right to you?" And in a number of instances, when we're working with department heads, and this is why it took a while, is they said, "No, these positions don't look right to us. Can you please look at this, this, and that?" So we'd go back out and look for it, and then you'd take those type of things into consideration. So for instance, if we couldn't find a, you know, let's say, a clerk type is twenty, and there's no clerk type is twenty in our region, what we'd do is we'd actually go look for a comparable county that actually had a job description that compared to it, as opposed to just kind of like splitting it like it was done in the past. So we try to target it more, and then from there, we'd go back, and then we'd ask the department head again. So what we started out is, there was four times that we worked with senior level management to say, "Is this the right position? Do you agree with it?" And we worked through a lot of those issues. And for this case, you know, it might be because, you know, it might just be, and again, I don't wanna speculate, but it might be because, you know, they say the J's are making more than what they do, so they should be up higher, because they believe that's equivalent. And when we looked at this, we looked at it more as, "This is what your job is, this is what your, the other position is." I did have a chance to look at one, I looked at Shawno, one of the persons that spoke, I looked at Shawno, looked at O'Connell, the position of O'Connell is not the same position that they do. We looked at Winnebago and a few others, and they came up with that average amount, so we could relook at that. And if there's a person that's saying, "Well, yeah, but my job description is wrong, or I also do this, this, or that." But a lot of times, some of this stuff is, so for instance, in my department, I could have four people that say, "Why do bonding?" Well, you account for the bonding, you help prepare the documents for bonding, but you actually don't oversee bonding, which actually raises them up quite a bit. So you gotta drill down to that level, and then the department heads are supposed to know, and the, or I shouldn't say the department heads, but the managers and supervisors of the department are supposed to know, "This is what my employee does." It's not what they think they do, but what they actually do. So what we do is then, we'll take a look at all those again. So in this situation, moving forward, specifically with the clerk of courts, and we'll probably also be reviewing TS this year also, but the clerk of courts, and how I probably imagine how this would work, is we would meet with the department head, meet with his managers, but then what we'd also do is probably just have an employee meeting, and say, "Okay, review your job descriptions, do you agree to them, yes or no, but we've already gone through that process, we gave everyone a job description, and then they're supposed to, okay, is this the person's job, yes or no?" So we should have a good baseline of what the job is. And then from there, we restart that whole process, and then go through that whole process.
Supervisor Danteen, anything further?
Yes, I do. That was a nice long answer that you answered the question.
Okay.
I'm sorry to say that, but, you know, you have experience doing your job, and you can do ten things today. I have experience with the same job, I only do one.
Sure.
You look at, you have a county that says that person processes twenty cases a day, and then our person processes forty. That longevity and that experience get rewarded, or you're just basing on, this person gets twenty-two bucks an hour, and that's what they get over here, and they do a lot less work. But it's basically something, it's just wages.
So we don't, we don't look at just wages, wages is, you look at what the person does. So if you, if your job is to process papers in Brown County, it's process papers in O'Connell and Shawno. And if there's a specialized skill in those processing of papers, we'll go to a different county that does that specific skill to do it, on the volume amount, you know, if it's really a volume issue, then maybe it's a staffing issue. And it's not, you know, you don't get paid piece by piece, it's probably, it's probably a staffing issue there, because you need to do a certain job. So when you go up to the comp class and say, "I do these skills, okay, the person that does these skills gets paid this, this is the high level, this is a low level, and this is the market for this job." Now, if there, if it's high demanding, and they can't keep up, and there's issues there, where they're saying, "Well, we have to process, you know, a hundred times more than Shawno County, or O'Connell County, or Odegeni County," because we can use Odegeni, that's probably a better comparison for that office, you know, we could probably make some adjustment to it, but it's basically on your job duties.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Danteen, clear your light, please. Next up Supervisor Ballard.
Thank you very much, Chair. Chad, just a processing questions, this is only my third year on the board of this seven year process, so, but excuse me if some of my questions I should have known. In your bonding example, where you talked about, there's some, definitely some high-level skills, some middle-level skills, and some just receivers have to get skills, how are you verifying that those are the skills that employees are doing? What's the verification process? Is it just the employee and the supervisor? Is there someone from the HR office that's also verifying what that level of work is done?
Well, so originally, when we started out, going back to the original one, there was job descriptions, those are supposed to be shared with the employees. Now, again, if you have a department where there's ten people doing that function, not everyone's gonna see it, not everyone's gonna sign off on it. So that had already been done, those were reviewed with the department. Again, it's the manager's job, so what their employees do. And then, in that process, HR does review that, because they write all the job descriptions. Do they do the day-to-day functions? No, but the department, the staff that have, that have spent time in the departments should know, and do know in most cases, unless if they have a new analyst assigned to them, what those job duties are, because they actually go and recruit and help hire those people. So for me, I know, I know, I can walk you through what each person in my office does and what level they do. So, you know, do I need that to be verified? No, it's my job as a supervisor to know what each department does.
So of those thirty-five, or sorry, thirty offices, how many of those high-level supervisors are constitutional officers versus employees of the county?
Can you restate that?
So you said that there's thirty, we have thirty departments.
So you got Sheriff's Department, Clerk of Courts, Register of Deeds, Treasurer, County Clerk, County Executive, and then really it's the chairman, you consider him, because he runs the county board office.
So almost half, or sorry, almost thirty, for constitutional officer, not of thirty?
Well, there's.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
I thought you went to nine, sorry.
So, but again.
But you feel like in the process, because someone that's an employee of the county has a different relationship with the county than someone that's a constitutional officer, that we need to do some extra steps as HR to verify those job descriptions for those employees? And because a lot of those jobs may turn over every two years, just to make sure that we have some consistency of what those job duties are for years, those, some of those, some consistency of what those job duties are from constitutional officer, constitutional officer, if they turn over. What, like, what's the verification we have on that?
So how would we respond to that Supervisor, is that, yes, it is true, anyone can get elected to office, and, and in this case, I believe all the constitutional officers actually hire professional staff, so they all have a deputy assigned to them, that usually, in most cases, know the department or have experience in it. Some people could debate that, but, you know, telling you the truth, I think a lot of the constitutional officers right now have good number twos, and they should know what their job role is. And just because you're an elected official or constitutional officer, that does not negate your responsibility to know what each of your departments do. But on this case, again, what I would do is, I would sit down with the employees, hear out their concerns, and then have them review their job descriptions, and go through the process, it's probably gonna take a little bit longer than, you know, a month to go through all that, but that's probably how it attacked this department, so if the HR working directly with the employees, and then going through the study that way.
And the reason I ask is, you know, many of our constituents, for all of us, are county employees, and I think of the questions I got about this process, a majority of them came, who reported up through a constitutional officer, that didn't feel like they understood what the job duties entailed for the job description rewrite. And I, so I just wanted to make sure that admin has a process to make sure that happens.
I apologize. Can you state that one more time?
Yeah, so of the complaints I've gotten surrounding this process, it seemed that a majority of the complaints I've got were from county employees who report up through a constitutional officer.
Okay, I apologize, I missed, okay, thank you.
Okay. I appreciate it. And so I just wanna make sure that there's a verification process in there, to make sure that we're doing right by the employees.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Clear your light, please Supervisor Ballard. Next up Supervisor Delaine.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, it's been a while, and I'm just gonna take mine off. Supervisor Seaver, I was looking for a timetable, it's in some of the stuff that he's put through his communications, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Clear your light, sir. Next up Supervisor Van Dyke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the concerns of the employees of the clerk of courts office have been clearly stated and heard by this board. I don't believe they will let us forget until they get some kind of reasonable resolution to their concerns. As such, I ask that we pass this complete, and we don't start breaking off pieces, because to me, that's a slippery slope that we don't wanna go down. There's twenty-six members here, we all heard the concerns, I don't think we're gonna forget in thirty days or sixty days and not have some kind of resolution to this. So I would just ask that we support this. I've been on the board for seven years, I think, one year after I got on the board, we started this process, so it's been six years of class and comp, I think we've gone through this process four times, we've never passed anything, we've never implemented anything. It's time to get something going, it may not be perfect, I understand it, never will be, but it's better than what we've been doing, which is just continuing to do nothing, and then we sit here and wonder why we lose employees, and things are getting corrected, because we don't do anything about it. So here's our opportunity to do so. And one other thing I wanted to just bring up is, there was a mention of bonuses before, and I just want everyone to keep in mind, I think the, what was alluded to was more or less like a performance-based or discretionary bonus, that's not what was suggested as a possible solution. It was basically taking the cost of living adjustment and putting it in bonus form, and the employee would receive it in order to stop the base from continuing to escalate, so he can never correct the problem. So the, to say that it was discretionary, and it would be, you know, people, well, you shouldn't get one or not get one, it has nothing to do with performance, it has nothing to do with trying to keep the base in line, and not take away from the employee of getting the cost of living adjustment as a bonus in the first place, so, thank you.
Clear your light, sir? Clear your light sir. Supervisor Lenson, on the Evans motion.
Yeah, I just, I would urge the board to, to vote against this, I don't, from a procedural point of standpoint, it doesn't make any sense for us to do it this way. It'd make more sense to pass it and then amend it, rather than amend it and then pass it, simply because we get the rest of it in, in course earlier. So I would just urge everyone to pass it, it makes a lot cleaner, and from a procedural standpoint, it makes absolutely no difference, the end result with us making changes to it, so I would urge just to vote.
Thank you, clear your light sir. Supervisor Shadowall.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I just wanna hear what you wrote for this motion, 'cause I, the more I look at this, I don't think you can say, we're voting on a therefore policy, so are you changing part of the policy?
No, just to prove the resolution as, as presented, except for the clerk of courts department.
But is that, where is that?
Well, those, those positions noted within the classifications here.
Well, go ahead.
Thank you. To Supervisor Shadowall's point, when this was debated at the executive committee, we started down the path where I brought up the policy, and were requesting some cleanup of some language, and I believe Supervisor Seaver said, wait a minute, we're not debating the policy here, because then the board is in the process of trying to set the policy, all we're doing is approving a resolution, that there is a policy, and that administration will follow it. So now if we're gonna get into the weeds of policy and start picking apart the line items, or we're gonna get into the class and comp, which actually technically, in this resolution that we have, it says nothing about approving the class and comp that's attached to this resolution, so I don't understand where we're even getting off trying to separate anything, there's nothing to separate. We're not approving the specific class and comp that's in here, because it's not even referenced as part of this resolution.
That's an administrative function.
It is, and that's my point.
I don't know if there's enough support anyway, so we're gonna get back to the main motion.
Okay, bye.
Clear your light please. Supervisor Buckley.
I think enough has been said, and competent Mr. Seaver, let's just vote.
Thank you sir, can you clear your light? Okay, on the Evans motion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Well, actually, we should use the board. Supervisor Buckley, clear your light please.
No.
That's under regular motion?
No, it's under the motion. To exclude the other court. Okay, we're back to the main motion. We have a motion before, so, well, just hold on, if someone wants, wants to speak for the main motion. Anyone wanna speak for the main motion? Use the board. Supervisor Evans, Supervisor Deloria, Vice Chairman Lund.
I voted aye.
Just the main motion.
I have the main motion. Full and unanimous. Main motion, main motion.
Before is the resolution approving the issuance of property assessed clean energy pace revenue bonds by the public finance authority, motion that executive was to approve made by Supervisor Hoyer, second by Supervisor Brusinski, under discussion. Under discussion, signal lights are lit, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is an ordinance to amend section two point zero six sub two and two point zero seven sub two of chapter two, Brown County Code of Ordinances, moving policy oversight of Brown County Housing Authority to admin, to PDNT, motion to approve by Supervisor Seaver, do you have a second?
Aye.
Second by Supervisor Nicholson, under discussion. Under discussion, signal lights are lit, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We struck twelve aye earlier this evening?
No, we're first table of order.
So we move on to J, resolution table of organization, change health and human services department, public health division.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Vice Chairman Lund, second by Supervisor Hoyer, under discussion. Under discussion, signal lights are lit, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is table of organization, change health and human services department CTC. I'll accept the motion. Motion to approve by Supervisor Bruski, do you have a second? Second by Supervisor Hoyer, under discussion. Under discussion, signal lights are lit, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is table of organization, change UW extension LTE life skills educator. Motion to approve by Supervisor Lafave, second by Supervisor Castor, under discussion. Under discussion, signal lights are lit, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was there oppositions?
No, shock.
Shock.
Passes unanimously. Next is the resolution authorizing five hundred thousand dollar loan to the Greater Green Bay Convention and Division of VR. Motion to approve by Supervisor Seaver, second by Supervisor Sennin, under discussion. Under discussion. Signal lights are lit, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Go.
Use the board.
Just call the camera?
Just close, call that.
CDB.
Get over there, go.
Supervisor Borchert?
You gotta scare her back.
Still doesn't.
NFS.
Soft touch.
Twenty-two five. Okay. Next core part of this scenario is a loan agreement promissory note between Brown County and the Greater Green Bay Convention and Division of VR. Motion to approve by Supervisor Buckley, seconded by Vice Chairman Lund, under discussion. First up Supervisor Evans.
Thank you. I support this immensely, I don't think we're getting why, we just passed it, we support it, but I do have two questions on this. The first is, under C collateral, I mean, it just says collateral agreement, law will agrees to pledge any and all assets or securities, oh, well, any time that is not cured, I mean, I think, I would have liked to have seen this to be defined.
Did you bring your microphone a little?
I'm sorry. You know, that, that's a fairly innocuous, innocuous statement, or general statement, it doesn't say anything, it's like, well, and I'm not, and I'm, so, I'm pointing these things out, I'm not concerned that the CDB's going out of business, they're not gonna be able to pay us, I think this, but for a, a promissory note like this, you would want that to be defined, you know, like, the county's taking a lean position on the building, now we may be the third lean position, or whatever, but I would think that we should have taken a stronger position on the, on the, on the terminal loan, or at least on the property, and this doesn't do much, well, I mean, I guess we'd be right. And then number three, penalty for late payment, I mean, how many days after, I mean, if it's due on the first, how many days, I mean, is it one day if it's late, is it gonna be a penalty, or is there a grace period, I mean, these are just things that we do in banking, that, you know, that, and to see that weren't in here, so I'm just gonna, I just wanted to point that out, I guess we'll approve it as it is, I'm not concerned that they're gonna not make, or I'm, you know, I have no concerns that they're gonna default, they default, and I think we're all in trouble, but those really need to be defined, I don't know if there's anything we can go back and do, I don't wanna hold this up because of that, but, I don't, I've asked Corporation Counsel if he was on the negotiation team, I mean, if you could address those, yeah, that'd be great. Penalty for late payment, there shall be imposed upon borrower, two percent penalty for any late payments computed on the amount of any principal, whose payments lender is overdue under this agreement, and for which lender has delivered a notice of default to borrower, so we've got notice of default provision in there, time to cure, and, and it says if it's for any late payment, that means if it's not in, they'll set on the first page. That's important, can somebody give grace period, you know, they have like two, three days, but that's fine, that's fine, hopefully you won't be setting a second, okay, and then C collateral?
Yeah, collateral, the, you know, it's, it's all a matter of the extent of who the authority on the contract is, you're proposing collateral on the building itself, I don't, I already know you're with whether they own the building, whether that's budget, or someone else.
I'm sure somebody has the first mortgage position, I mean, the first lien position.
Or he gets the, Brad, or Cam?
Who's it, Nicolay? Okay, so we just take a second position.
So what do we look at? You know, at collateral provisions here, and this, most of the terms including that were before both the administration committee and the executive committee, they were discussed repeatedly, I think a couple months after those, and that's what we came up with, if you have a borrower that, that you have concerns about, you typically have higher levels of collateral.
I was the president of the credit union, so I... Okay, that's fine, so, I, I mean, I understand, I was the president of the credit union. Yeah, we can have it, I just wanted to point these out, I'm fine with it, Mr. Chairman, but I just want to point this out, I think it's, it's, I mean, you can be, you can have good friendly relationships, and you can be very confident in the, the both parties doing business, but I've always said, you know, when money's on the table, nothing else matters, because we are doing a business transaction. I like Mr. Toll, I like the whole staff there, I like what they do, I have great confidence in their abilities to, to, to do what they do and repay us back, but the fact of the matter is, money's on the table, all else is off, you know, nothing else matters, and we should have had a little tighter agreement, but I'm, I'm confident, and I'll support it, thank you.
Very good, thanks Supervisor Evans, clear your light please, next up Supervisor Tran.
I basically have to say this time, since we've stopped, and we actually agree on this one.
Just cover your mouth. Supervisor Tran, as a floor.
I don't think you should ask, that's what you're saying. I am in full support of, of forwarding the, to the commission barrel, I just had a thing concerns with collateral, it wasn't very clear to me, and also, number three, it wasn't very clear. Also, there's nothing in here, I know that we can't tie future boards, but is there any guarantees that, you know, the future board isn't going to forgive this loan and lose out that some money, because we have money?
Keep on using the law.
I mean legally, is there anything that...
The question for some of the companies.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm, we do have a provision there, it's... It's, it's under default, I believe, oh, there it is, under G is default, the occurrence of any of the following events shall constitute a default by the borrower of the terms of this woman carrying a promissory note. Number four, and this, again, all, all of these terms and conditions, these are what was discussed at, you know, the individuals, President Admin, and that executive, and all we discuss of all those terms, that, that's where this one came from, it basically says borrower, the CDB, and/or any of their employees, officers, or agents, if any of them seek to have under forgive this loan, or reduce any amount due for the agreement of note, that would be a default under the security.
Well, I understand that part, I'm asking that to, you know, forgive the loan, I'm talking about future board taking the initiative to forgive the loan.
Right, and I, I, again, we wrote this contract with terms and conditions that are in our control and ability, we have total control over future board, so I didn't put a condition in there to future board.
Supervisor Tran, still at the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, can you clear your light please ma'am? Next up Vice Chairman Lund.
Yeah, I mean, the part about future boards, you can't stop future boards from, from doing things that they can do, but, this one went to their, to their executive committee, then it went to us, I mean, if we don't pass this tonight, it's gonna be another month before this is, this goes through, so, then they might come back with something else, I mean, I, I think that this was done in good faith, and I think we should pass it. I, I understand your concern Supervisor Evans, Supervisor Tran, but I, I think we're in good shape, we're gonna get the ten payments, and we'll get paid off, I mean, this, I mean, paid off for the loan, you know, the loan will be paid off, that's, but, I mean, this, if, if some counties actually have CDB underneath the county, and they pay for all the operations of the CDBs, so, I think we're getting a pretty good deal in Brown County, and, and the amount of money that they can bring into this county through special events and other tourism areas, gonna more than pay off this five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, I don't think that they'd be asking for this building if they didn't think that this would help in getting more people to come to the area, and make this area even a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, clear your light sir. I'll give it a try by a voice vote, all is in favor of the loan agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Use the board. Uh, wait, Supervisor Lund, clear your light please.
Okay.
Let's go there.
These things are bad.
Well, we'll do it the old-fashioned way, I'll do a roll call.
Personally, we're...
What are you doing? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call, we can't use the board, 'cause his light won't clear, it locks it out. Supervisor Saber. Supervisor Dwayne. Supervisor Nicholson.
No way.
Supervisor Hoyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Brusinski.
Aye.
Supervisor Lafave.
Aye.
Supervisor Erickson.
Aye.
Supervisor Borchert. Supervisor Evans.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderlyes.
Aye.
Supervisor Buckley.
Aye.
Supervisor Landworth.
Aye.
Supervisor Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Ruski.
Aye.
Supervisor Ballard.
Aye.
Supervisor Castor.
Aye.
Supervisor Van Dyke.
Aye.
Supervisor Lenson.
Aye.
Supervisor Deloria.
Aye.
Supervisor Tran.
Aye.
Supervisor Sennin.
Aye.
Supervisor Shadowall.
Aye.
Supervisor denies.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Lund.
Aye.
White hand is an aye.
I'm not sure what that happened, but I think...
Very good. We're not there yet. Such other matters is authorized by law, any late communications? Just raise your hand, 'cause this is locked out. Supervisor Lenson.
Not a communication, which is...
We're not done yet.
This is mostly for you, Paul Page had stated that it was a motion to refer to make changes and bring back, did that happen before we voted on it? You had said to, uh, the motion that everybody was to approve, so I just wanted to make it clear, because it's not in minutes. Was that, was the change that was referred to court counsel remains?
It's a procedure question, I wanted to say that.
Yeah, I just, I caught it after, kinda, we had, we just threw it, but...
The motion had exactly what you referred to the staff, and then all of a sudden, we were voting.
And then you had said for motion to approve, I just wanted to make sure that change was made, it made it into the, the change, because I wasn't at the meeting, I don't know exactly.
That's the admin oversight to PDNT.
What, what happened there, I was able to draft it quickly, I had thought at the committee, I stated that, that that was, it was straight to county court, but, you know, and I mean, so I managed to get it drafted, and... Uh, but, you know, and I mean, not, so I, I managed to get it drafted and then on the agenda.
So the one, the one that's in the, the one that's in the agenda is the amended version.
Yes, that has the change.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Any late communications? Any late communications? Supervisor Seaver.
Just to make sure we're a hundred percent clear, uh, two administrations committee requesting human resources to the Department of Administration. Review the class and comp study, clerk of courts department is being completed within ninety days.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, bill's over five thousand, the period ending January thirty-first was a big spender. Motion made by Supervisor Ruskey.